So since it's recording, it's definitely too late to offer up that this weather almost made me want to skip the school committee meeting.
You can skip the meeting tomorrow afternoon, Joe.
No, we can't actually. All right. Sorry, Joe. I hate the rain on your sunny day, but no, you can't.
It's just beautiful out there. It's great.
Hello.
Waiting for Curtis and Steve Miller. Who else are we waiting for? Do we have another student joining us, Jackie?
We do. Emily should be here any minute.
Okay.
This is Steve. I'm here. I'll be transferring off the cell phone in less than five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, it looks like everybody is here. So I would like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is Thursday, April 8th, 2021, 6:00 PM. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGLC 30A Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. The meeting is being broadcast on Willianette TV, Channel 1302 in Williamstown, and it will also be posted on the Mount Greylock Regional School District YouTube page within 24 hours of the meeting. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Next up on our agenda is public comment. I do not have anyone signed up for public comment. And I don't see anyone out there with their hands up, so we'll move on to students spotlight.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Mrs. Vannett and I had spoken that I would just start the comments. So I'm Patrick O'Connell. I'm the orchestra director at Mount Greylock. And I just wanted to say a few things, be really brief, because I want to let the students give them the spotlight, as it were. But this year, we've been doing a lot of fun, fun things this year has forced us to kind of reinvent a few things. But we've had several successful Greylock plays where we've performed for the school as they're entering into school around like 7:15 to 7:45. And that's been great. We performed Beethoven, Schubert, and even Hamilton. We're preparing Hamilton. And then actually, next week, we're going to have the students perform Vivaldi's Four Seasons on Tuesday and Friday for both cohorts. And we've been incorporating, obviously, the students that are fully remote, finding ways to incorporate them using different technologies. One is called Smart Music, another is called Flipgrid, and of course, using live Zoom rehearsals and having different techniques to get to really connect with each student. In addition to that, in a couple of weeks, we're going to have, in late May, we're going to have a tentatively scheduled outdoor performance for parents. So we're hoping that will move forward. And last but not least, I want to just, I want to give recognition to the students who auditioned and were accepted to the Massachusetts Music Educators Association Senior District Festival. Those students were Michael Faulkner, Grace Winters, Caleb Lowe, Emily Dupuy, Quinn Repetto, Beatrice Pedroni, and Oscar Lowe. So those are the students that participated in Senior District Festival. We're really proud of them. They put in a lot of work preparing for the audition. And it was a pleasure. It was a privilege working with them. I'll let Jackie take over.
Yeah, what he said. As far as band and chorus go, we've been doing a lot of similar things in terms of, you know, using Zoom rehearsals, Smart Music, and Flipgrid. We band and chorus, you know, there's some unique challenges with that in times of COVID, but we've been following all of the protocols from DESI, the guidelines for special courses. We've been utilizing bell covers for the band. And the Massachusetts State requirement is that students are 10 feet apart. We keep them at 15 feet at least. So we've been trying to be extra safe with that using our auditorium. Mr. O'Connell and I will be starting a jazz band next week. We've got an extracurricular opportunity for students there, and we're really looking forward to that. We had about 18 students express interest. We're looking forward to our middle schoolers returning on full time on April 28th. At that point, our middle school ensembles will be rehearsing during directed study, and we'll still continue our pull-out lessons. And on the same note, as far as middle school goes, we also had a number of students audition for junior districts, which we had, we had great turnout. Simon Shin, Killian Scanlon, Maura Scanlon, Maya O'Connor, Mateo Weyland-Lu, Natasha Nugent, and May Bergstrasser all auditioned and were accepted into the Western Mass Honor Ensemble. And we're really excited. We've got two of our senior district students, both of whom received an all-state recommendation to audition at that level. And we have two of our students here tonight to perform some short excerpts for you. I don't know who wants to go first. I don't know who's ready, but we've got Michael and Emily here.
Michael, I think, just emailed me about, like, just 10 minutes ago when he was getting ready, warming up, and his A-string broke. I'll let you tell it, Michael. And I think, I'm not sure if you have it prepared, but if not, I think you wanted to say a few words.
Yeah, unfortunately, as I was warming up, my A-string did break, and I was not able to get a new string on in time for the meeting. But I would like to kind of just express that my time in orchestra has definitely been a very positive experience and one of the main stress reliefs in this kind of time. I know it's just getting the opportunity to engage with other people in kind of a creative way is a really great outlet. I know, like, one of my favorite things has always been, like, performing for fellow students. And I think getting to do the Greylock plays in the morning when students are coming in has just been a great experience. And I know, like, after we do them, I always have several friends come up to me and talk about how they really enjoyed it and it kind of, like, got them in a positive mood for the day. And just kind of that sense of community that that builds has had a really kind of positive and stress-relieving impact on me. And I hope that we get to keep doing more stuff like that in the future.
Awesome. Thank you, Michael. That's so great. And Emily, I think, is still in here. I can't see her on a smaller screen. But Emily's going to be performing a little bit of the Sonata for Flute and Piano by Francis Poilong.
Jackie, I don't see her. She was there, but she's gone.
Oh, no. I don't have an email from her, but I'll keep checking. Hopefully, she tries to get back in. Sorry, I don't know.
It's no problem. She really was here a minute ago. We saw her on the screen, so she must have accidentally got bumped off.
I'll try emailing her. I don't, I have a feeling we've had this issue with, I'm sure you guys all know, as far as classes go, sometimes this happens. Timing.
My Emily's going to go text her and see if she got bumped off the meeting.
Between strings breaking and technology.
It is the class of many Emilys after all. Four of them, I think.
At one point, I had six students in a flute lesson, and three of them were named Emily. Worked out perfectly for duets. I could say, okay, all the Emilys on line A and the non-Emilys on line B.
And I've got two violin players named Charlotte. I didn't even think Charlotte was a common name in the same lesson group, two of them.
Hi, I'm so sorry. My Wi-Fi was really bad, and it just kicked me out of the meeting. So that's why.
No, no need to apologize.
So I think we just, I almost introduced you, but Emily is here to perform the Sonata for Flute by Francis Poilong. This is the all-state audition piece that she prepared.
That's basically just an excerpt. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael and Emily, for being such wonderful students that we could show for the committee. Thank you very much. So I appreciate it. And thank you all of you for having Mrs. Vannett and I.
Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on to our next agenda item. Carrie?
Sorry, Christina, I just wanted to ask, oh, did they leave already? No. Okay, I was going to ask if the Greylock Plays music performances are recorded? Because I remember they were, another year they were played for, or maybe it was in the fall, we had some played for the school committee during a meeting. That would also be nice.
So I don't know if I can just interject in response to that, Carrie. I know we've definitely filmed clips of all the ones that have happened to get them up on our social media accounts. As Mr. O'Connell just said, we have some planned for this upcoming week on Tuesday for the A cohort, Friday for the B cohort. So I can definitely check in with somebody and make sure we get those fully captured, if you'd like. And then we can come back and bring those back to you at a later meeting.
I would love that.
That's no problem. Yeah, I'll take care of that.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. Okay, so next up on the agenda is approval of minutes. And first up is March 25th, 2021 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the March 25th, 2021 meeting minutes? I think Michelle moved, and did you second Curtis? Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Owen, aye.
Conry, aye.
Constantine, aye.
Curtis, I think you're still muted.
No, we just don't have it. Audio's not working.
Okay, green aye.
Johnson, aye.
Mila, aye.
Hey, that motion passes. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the March 31st, 2021 minutes? So moved. Julia moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Johnson seconds. Any discussion? I just wanted to point out, on several of the votes, Julia's last name and my last name were both spelled incorrectly. It's just a typo.
Given that I'm cutting and pasting, I'm not surprised if it's on several votes. If it's made once, it will propagate, but we can fix that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, all in favor?
Owen, aye.
Conry, aye.
Constantine, aye.
Curtis, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Mila, aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. That motion passes. Okay, next up on our agenda are principal updates. And I'm not sure, we have Lanesboro Elementary as listed going first. Nolan, do you need to share a screen or?
I mean, I do not. I just shared the Zoom Around the World template or the screenshot of that. You guys can look into it. If you liked the entire presentation, I can share that with you. With the permission of the Community Learning and Action Group, who will put it on. I can share the entire presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. So sorry, just dive in. Being alphabetically first, I can dive right in. Sound good? I broke the update into three pieces: student support, student activities, and the reopening. So since the last time I was in front of you all, the Student Support Center was up and running strong throughout the year. It had 68 students attend the support center, which is great. They had lunch, they had recess, of course, all socially distanced and safe. And also, teachers could walk down real quick and check in on a student if they needed to in that asynchronous time, and allow specialists to check in as well. The B E S S screener, we are through a lot of it so far. Student and parent teachers, student, no, teacher and parent completion of the assessment is getting finalized. So far, we've had 69 students identified, and to get identified, there's three categories: externalizing, internalizing, and adaptive skills. And the measurements are average, elevated, and extremely elevated. We looked at the elevated and extremely elevated in all three categories to identify those 69 students. With that, we are using gaggle therapy, which is something that we are using to have a remote therapy with students. It's by a licensed provider in the state of Massachusetts, but it's a Zoom thing so that they can get connected with someone quicker than they can in person in Western Massachusetts. So far, we have referred three different students to gaggle therapy. And once we refer them, we kind of back off. We don't know if any contact has been initialized. But we know we are referring people to that program. And lastly, for student support, we are still continuing our pool testing. We have 108 students and 48 of our 51 faculty and staff in pool testing, which is awesome. Pool testing adds to an extra layer of safety to keep our community safe. So I strongly encourage everyone who has not signed up to sign up for pool test. Any questions about student support? Okay, so student activities. On December 23rd, we had the Winter Jam, which was a Zoom read-aloud. So every student that joined us put their jammies on. I had my jammies on, and we had three stories read. I read a story, Miss Ashley and Miss Mellow, but a story, if you're a Lanesboro person, and you have heard Miss Mellow read a book, it is magical. She is such a great reader, so it was a great time for everyone. The Vermont Family Network put on a puppet show about kindness for grades K through four. And talked about what kind, why kindness is important, and what to do when someone is unkind to you. We also had Jason Ennis, through the Berkshire Music School, we had Jason Ennis come in and do a global music assembly, which was Assembly of Music All Around the World, is about 45-minute presentation for grades four through six. In the last three weeks, we've had two Zoom Around the World presentations. The first was a presentation by Arturo Cam, who is from Mexico. He grew up in Mexico City. The students in grades K through two, from Williamstown Elementary and Lanesboro Elementary, hopped on a Zoom and got this great presentation about the culture and lifestyle in Mexico. And then last Friday, grades four, three through six, met with a student named Sudeh, and her last name, I'm not going to even try to pronounce, a student from Turkey, and they talked about the traditions and culture in Turkey, specifically her hometown of Istanbul. And they talked about marriage traditions, which I found very interesting. And then the last thing for student activities, Math Club has started, which is an enrichment program for students that want a little extra challenge in math. They either work individually or as a team to conquer difficult math problems. Any questions about student activities? I should mention that the Remote Academy students were invited to all of the Lanesboro activities that we had throughout the last, you know, six months, or however long we've been in two different forms of school. So lastly, our reopening. We reopened on Monday, if you didn't know, and it was absolutely awesome. It was, it was great to have all the students back in school to hear the noise of a classroom the way it should be. So I mean, obviously, I think I need to thank everyone that made this happen, the teachers. They had to adapt to a new schedule rather quickly, and they did it with ease. The paraprofessionals, they've been crushing it all year with the support center, giving the support to students all year. The custodians, on Wednesday last week, all the desks from the support center got moved into classrooms, tables were taken out of storage. They did it all in one day, so teachers had time to prep their rooms. They went above and beyond to get the job done. It was amazing. Jake and Joe, for getting the tent, getting that tent, we could have lunch in a safe space outside is amazing. And also, I'm getting so many asks to use that tent for weddings. A bunch of different activities. Kindergarteners, they wrote me letters to see if they could also eat in the tent. It's just been absolutely awesome. And then Tim Sorrell in the Lanesboro Police Department, Ralph Swerzer at UNISTRESS, Lanesboro DPW, John Stracher for helping getting safety barriers around our tent, our tents in the parking lot. And we just want to make sure that no cars can get in there by accident or intent. So we have a lot of safety around that time. So that's reopening in person. So the Remote Academy update. Any questions on Lanesboro Remote Opening in Person before I hop on to the Remote Academy update?
My question is, where's the video?
What video?
Yeah, it would have been great to see the reopening video of all the kids. Sorry.
I would love to have had time to do that, but I was really focused on the actual logistics of it all. Maybe in September, we'll have a real good one. We'll see.
I feel like you could have at least been in a bunny costume or something. Remember the elf thing? That was awesome.
So the Remote Academy update, we've had three transitions since the last time I spoke with you all on 1218, 38, and 45. So a little update on the numbers. We have 16 Lanesboro students and 28 Williamstown students in the Remote Academy. With the reopening, their schedules have changed a little bit. We're trying to maximize our specialists in the asynchronous time. But we're still working out a few kinks with that as we run into little overlaps of time between the Lanesboro Specialist and the Remote Academy Specialist. And then we also made a change to the academic support. We now have a teacher sign up for academic support. So if a teacher notices a student struggling, they can then sign up to meet with a paraprofessional. And in that sign up, they can say, this is what they're doing, this is what they need help on. They can set it to be over a couple of weeks, or it can be just a one time, like, hey, you missed school yesterday, can you catch them up on that? So it's a really way to streamline that academic support, help the students get what they missed or what they're struggling with. So I just gave you a lot of information. I'm sure if you have questions, what questions do you have for me? All right, I'll pass it on to whoever's next alphabetically.
All right, I think that's me. Hi, everybody. You're going to definitely hear a lot of similar activities between West and Less. I can definitely say that one of the things that Nolan and I are really working towards is a lot of collaborations between the two of us. But between our two schools, and ultimately, a goal is for our students to have shared experiences. They're going to be together at the high school. And one of the things that's important to Nolan and I is to really prepare the kids and allow them to have activities where they're seeing each other well before they ever get to seventh grade. So similar to what Nolan already spoke about, Zoom Around the World was an incredible activity that we were fortunate enough to participate in. In working with the Center for Learning and Action, I was able to meet two of the Williams students who were kind of the masterminds behind the program. So I'd love to give a shout out to Michaela Topper and Noah Reich. I had a meeting with them, and I said, what do you think about trying to do it at elementary school? I know you're doing these presentations at the high school. What do you think? And that was all it took to have these two college students run with that idea and try and figure out how they could morph a presentation into something that was really suitable for elementary school students. And I just remember, you know, Michaela emailing me saying, well, would it be okay if we had two students? And would it be okay if they are from different countries? And just the ability for two college students to be able to take an idea, change it into anything that we were asking. And then they were able to get so many Williams students who were volunteering to see if they could present at the elementary schools that what it has really turned into is that it will hopefully not be a project that is singular to this year. It came out of a necessity, and how do we bring some normalcy to this year during a pandemic? But what we really found was that the kids were incredibly engaged. The Less kids and the West kids were raising their hands and asking questions and completely engaged by these two college students' presentations about their home countries. And the hope will be that we can continue that going into next year with more of a collaboration from the Williams students and continuing to provide our own students with a look into different cultures and different countries across the world. I know Nolan and I were really impressed that the kids really, even though it was virtual, were completely at the edge of their seat. So we're hoping that that's a partnership that will continue for both of our schools. We too will be experiencing the global influences on American music that the Berkshire Music School is going to bring to us. That comes to us next week. Our fourth graders are deeply in the mix of learning with Shakespeare and Company. They are working to do a virtual presentation of the play As You Like It. If you have ever experienced Shakespeare virtually, it's pretty amazing what Shakespeare and Company is able to do with students virtually to get them into character, but also to be able to get them to understand what Shakespeare is really about. And it's pretty magical. They plan on performing a play completely virtually. Each of the kids are going to be recording their own parts, so it should be something, definitely something to look for at the end of April that they'd love to share with you. And our sixth grade musical is also well underway. Betsy Reali at our school is a magician of many sorts. What she does with children in the realms of music is unbelievable. She's going to be working with the kids to perform My Son Pinocchio. She began virtual rehearsals months ago. Now that we're back in person, she's actually able to see the kids and do some in-person work with them, which has been pretty impressive. The PTO is hosting our month-long Read-A-Thon for the kids. And again, it really goes back to that idea that we're trying to bring some normalcy to this crazy year. And what can we do to bring the fun back? It may be a little different, but it doesn't mean that we can't infuse a lot of those activities that bring joy to our kids, to our staff, and to our families. And in just one week of the School Read-A-Thon, the students have read 11,616 minutes. So as far as time on reading, you know, we're pretty impressed by that, and we're hoping that we can continue that for the rest of the month. Next, the sixth graders are going to be attending Mount Greylock next week. They're going to check out the space. They're going to get to meet with teachers. But again, it's another opportunity for them to see the students from Less as well and continue to create that shared experience because we'll be at the high school together. Lastly, my reopening update, much like Nolan's, the last couple of weeks have been stressful, to say the least. But what continues to be remarkable is at every turn, at every moment that we need people to step up and adapt and be flexible, people are doing it. Huge, massive shout-outs to the cafeteria staff, to our custodians, to our administrative staff. Huge, massive shout outs to the cafeteria staff, to our custodians, to our administrative staff, the teachers, the paraprofessional, the school nurse, Williamstown Police Department, because this could not have happened without the immense amount of teamwork that went into bringing kids back to school. We are now, you know, four days in. Everybody is pretty happy. It's definitely been a range of emotions for teachers and for students. But we're doing it. We're trying to continue to remain safe. I think it's definitely important to note that we are really trying to maximize distancing, sanitization, making sure as much as possible we can have classes outdoors, moving our art classes, our music classes, our PE classes outdoors when we're able. And of course, you know, the big idea of the tent has finally been pulled off. So that ability to be able to have an outdoor eating space has been incredible. I think probably the kids loved being able to watch the tent go up. That was an interesting couple of hours, to say the least. Much like Nolan, the side of the truck had this huge completed picture of a tent that looked like a wedding tent. So all of the kids are convinced that someone in the building is getting married. We're just going to keep it a secret to see who might, it might be the end of the school year. But it was definitely impressive. Pool testing for us, right now we have 261 students who are getting tested. We're hoping to continue to have that amount increase. It's definitely been something that's been a positive experience for both students and staff, and we're hoping that that continues. Lastly, a reminder, just with the influx of students coming back, we want to continue to remind our families about safe driving and being really cautious when they're pulling into the school. It makes it really challenging this year with the number of entrances we have, and kids are going all over, and we recognize that. But with that, we want to make sure that the kids are able to get into the building safely. And then the last thing, if I can share my screen, I just wanted to share a couple of pictures with you of the reopening, just because it's definitely worth seeing some of the things that happened. All right, hold on just a second. Pictures of our kindergartners. One of the most magical parts of the reopening was, I think I probably had forgotten, our kindergartners had never stepped foot in the cafeteria until Monday. So pretty powerful that, you know, you bring the kindergartners in. They were 100% game to do picnic-style lunch, and it's been pretty incredible. This little one, his first comment was like, couldn't believe he got to eat lunch at school. Some of our fifth graders, they just finished studying the solar system. Some of our second graders, this was an outdoor art class. And then, because it's worth it, this was the making of the tent. So that's about it. Are there any questions anybody has?
I have a question about the tent. Is the plan to have some of the windows on the sides open? Or is it just to have those doors open for the circulation?
So the, all of the windows in the front can be rolled up. It's just the way that they left it to be set up. Tomorrow, we're working on marking the spaces inside so that we have six-foot markers internally, and then we'll pull some of the windows up so that we can allow, kind of maximizing the light, but also so that we can get the airflow in there, too.
Perfect. And there's windows on three of the four sides?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Go ahead, Carrie.
So my question, thank you both, Cindy and Nolan, for your presentations. My question to each of you is about the percentages of kids who are testing. You gave us the numbers, but I'm just wondering, what is the percentage of the school population that's involved in the testing program? And do we know why the kids who aren't testing are not in the program? Do we have a sense of, either anecdotally, or if we've surveyed them?
Well, I know at our school, we probably have about, I would say, 75% of the students are testing. And the feedback that we've gotten, some of it is a lot of people just haven't accessed the form and the consent form digitally. So we've moved into basically now handing out paper copies so that students can bring a physical copy home, so that parents can take a look at it that way. And then we do have a couple of families who aren't interested in it, but the majority is just people getting the word out and getting people that paper copy in hand, because sometimes that's easier. A couple of our students, we sent home translated copies to make sure as well. And so we expect in this next week, since we've sent out so many paper copies, that hopefully that number will continue to rise.
Thank you.
Well, the reasoning is the same in Lansbury, but we only have about 65% of our students participating in pool testing.
Jose, sorry, I didn't see you over there.
I was happy to look awkward with my hand up. I want to thank the both of you, Nolan and Cindy, for these wonderful presentations. I think I speak as a parent, and I'm sure I speak for many parents in our communities, that we are so grateful for all the work that you both have done, your teams have done, your teachers, you name it, to get our kids back in school. So thank you so much. The question I have for the both of you, and, you know, if you feel comfortable sharing with us in terms of where we are in the process, we are day, we just finished day four of this new, this new world. Is there anything, or can you foresee anything that either of your schools might need as we navigate from here to the end of the academic year that could see us through this successfully?
Cindy, you want to go first, or I can?
You can go first.
I can tell you what my focus, and I don't know if it's a need or a focus, is I want to find a way to make this the end of the year magical for sixth grade. We do not plan on going to Cape Cod, which is our first time not going to Cape Cod for a very, I think, 30 years or something like that. There's one other year that it was missed. So finding a way to make the end of the year magical for the sixth grade students is something that I'm thinking a lot of. And then I think moving forward with summer programming academically, really just to close up any gaps that might exist in the population.
And I had shared some similar sentiments with Nolan. Those are, you know, things that we're trying to do as well. I think ultimately, we want to bring our kids back, which we've done successfully for four days. But so much of what we're hoping for is, again, how do we bring back some of that normalcy and some of the fun of school? Even though it might look different, it doesn't mean it has to be bad. And I think if there's one thing that this pandemic has taught us is that our teachers are capable of incredible things. Our students are capable of incredible things. And the things that have come out of both of our schools from students and from staff have been overwhelming. And I think for us, you know, how do we continue in the next 44 days to make it really fun and make it be a great place to be and make kids feel comfortable, even though they're wearing a mask? And even though when they go to the cafeteria to eat, they have to face one direction? How do we normalize that a little bit more while school is still being a great place to be? And I think, you know, something else, I think it's, it's nothing different than I think we would ask in a normal year, and that's continued support and encouragement of the staff in the building. I think, you know, there's amazing things happening every day. The teachers, the paras, every staff member in there is working incredibly hard. And I think that's something that everybody needs to feel, that support and encouragement. And I would continue to ask our community to support and encourage your teachers and your paraprofessionals and your staff within the building.
That means that the first week of Teacher Appreciation Week is the first week in May for those who want to, you know, share your support for teachers.
It's a plan.
Thank you both. I don't see any other questions, so we can move on, I think, to Mount Greylock Regional School.
Alrighty. So, hi, everybody. I just, I just finished with, this is Jake, by the way. I just finished with a meeting with our senior parents that got done soon, but Colin is all set to present our portion, so I will let him rock and roll.
So just to get us started, I was going to talk a bit about Greylock Plays, but we've already covered that, I guess. So I'll make sure to have that video for when you next meet, so you can enjoy that music as well. We do continue to offer a varied assortment of opportunities to our students outside of their traditional academics. Over the last couple of days, we have wrapped up the next part in our Greylock Talks Razor Voice series, which we had three speakers across the last couple of weeks coming in to present to our students on different environmental issues and that kind of topic. Yesterday, we also got a presentation from the Playwright Mentoring Project, a group of Berkshire students who are mentored in writing plays and performing them. Excuse me, sorry. Who through Zoom were able to share some original work with our students yesterday to give them some entertainment and provide a Q and A afterwards during their lunch and directed study period. So a number of varied opportunities we continue to provide our students. Our pool testing as well is moving forward. It's doing great right now. We are really excited by the fact that it's pretty much shown us. We have no concerns of in-school transmission currently. In preparation for you to ask for the number, I believe we are at about 70% participation. So that's just over 350 students, give or take, who have signed up to participate. I apologize, I don't have our staff percentage offhand right now. And then the last updates I have for you are just about some topics as we look forward to some of the big changes and kind of events we had towards the end of the school year. So we're in full swing preparing for that return on April 28th for our middle school students. We're excited to welcome back all who want to be coming back for that five-day-a-week programming. We're kind of lucky in that that date is a Wednesday. So what would traditionally be a fully remote day instead is going to allow us to bring all of our seventh and eighth graders in, let them feel like they rule the building for a day, basically, as they'll be the only students there. And especially for some of our seventh graders who may never have come into the building yet, it's going to be kind of that easy entrance that's a little bit less intimidating as there won't be any of those bigger high school students moving around in the hallways with them or anything. So that was just kind of perfect timing for that transition. Then past that, we are still anticipating welcoming back all of our high school students the following Monday, May 3rd. So that gives us just a bit of time to settle in with our middle school before we welcome everybody else back to then go those last couple of weeks of the school year. On April 28th, we will see a slight adjustment in the blocks of our schedule. Blocks will be shortened, and so will passing time by a minute each. And that's just going to help us to facilitate the two lunch periods that we're going to need with all the students back in the building to just maintain those health and safety and the distance requirements of those lunch times. We will be using multiple locations to facilitate those lunches. So we still anticipate having the cafeteria and gymnasium as separate locations, helping us kind of cover our seventh grade through 11th graders. And then our seniors, we're exploring a couple of options still, really hoping for that nice weather to provide them as much opportunities to eat outdoors. We've also looked into how we can best utilize the barn facility that's back near the admin building to host that. And we're even exploring the logistics of providing them with lunch down at Wabika to kind of give them a senior privilege and their own kind of eating space that will allow them as the class to really enjoy those last few weeks together. MCAS for grades seven, eight, nine, and 10 still scheduled for May. We'll be using upcoming faculty time to just make sure our staff is ready for that. There is the discussion of that remote option for students to be able to utilize. So we're excited to find out more details on what exactly that looks like. The commissioner has recommended that 11th grade students no longer need to take the MCAS, but can if they want to. So that, as well as a recent update to the MCAS structure. And then as Principal Schultz mentioned, he was meeting with the parents, and I think it was just parents tonight of our senior class looking towards the end of their school year and some of those events that they can look forward to. So Senior Week with its end-of-year activities, graduation planning is all in full swing, really trying to look at how we can provide the most robust experience to our students while also just ensuring that everybody is healthy and safe in whatever options we look into. So really looking to take advantage of the outdoor grounds, hoping for that good weather, because that always makes that much easier to do. But we continue to plan and kind of prepare for any other alternatives we need to, while, like I said, prioritizing health and safety of everybody. So I believe that's all the updates I have for you. If there are any questions, I'm happy to provide whatever other information I can.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Okay, I am not seeing any questions, so I think you're off the hook, Colin. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, up next on our agenda is the Finance Subcommittee update. So I'm going to turn this over to Carrie.
Actually, Joe, do you want to take this one?
Yes, Perkins Eastman was not quite ready to get documents that were usable or participate tonight. And so we've been having a discussion around, given the time-sensitive nature of trying to get a set of bid documents out, whether or not we can perhaps find time next week, late next week, to go through that process if that works. So I think we're going to be sending out a request to see whether or not Thursday night might work for a single agenda item type, type meeting, where we have the Finance Committee first meet and review things in detail, and then the Full School Committee receive a recommendation and the high-level points from them after. So I think the hope is perhaps the Finance Committee can meet at 4:30 PM, and the Full School Committee can get together at 6:00. That's the, that's the update, the non-update update.
Thanks.
Christina, do you want to, thanks, Joe. Do you want to take a poll of the committee now to see about availability?
Sure, that's a great idea.
Just take a minute.
Do you want to start with Finance? Or do you already know that you guys are all set?
Yeah, we, we know that we're available in that stretch of time.
Okay, so I, I can say that I am available April 15th at 6:00 PM. Julia, do you want to go next, and then we can just go down the line?
I'm good.
Thank you. Curtis, is your... Do you have volume?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
It's a Christmas miracle. I'm good, but I need to pull down the shade.
Jose?
Yes, I'm good.
Great, thank you. Steve? Oh, you're on Finance, that's right.
Yep, that's fine.
So good. So why don't we do Finance at 4:30 and School Committee at 6:00?
Okay. I'll make sure, when we talk about upcoming meetings, that I reiterate those dates and times.
Thank you. I don't have any other updates.
Okay, thank you. So next up on the agenda is Superintendent Report.
Thank you. I think a few of us, I don't know about anybody that's not an employee of the school district, but I think a few of us were getting a little bit teary at those updates from the principals. It's been a long time since we've had normalcy and had seen schools being used for the reason that schools are invested in and in thinking about our seniors' upcoming end-of-year events. It's, Michelle and I were kind of joking yesterday about the nature of those of us that cry really easily. And so if my camera went off, or if anybody else's camera went off, it's because we were just a little bit moved by those, by those principal updates. It's really good news. And, you know, this, this welcome back of our elementary school students was working, working in a school system, this is my 28th year of being in a public school system as an employee, not a student. And I have lots and lots of examples of magnificent team efforts, which, which are people pulling together for the good of kids. And sometimes those team efforts actually include our students. I think this, watching us get ready for reopening here this past week and watching the middle and high school who have been preparing and doing scheduling work and figuring this out for, for the same amount of time that our elementary colleagues have been. This will go down in my mind as maybe the, the best, most comprehensive team effort I have ever had the honor of being a part of or witnessing. And the principals were, were very effusive in their thanks of everybody else. I'm going to join them in their thanks of everybody else, from the school staff to the school faculty, to our parents, all of you, and to our students who came up large to make to our parents, all of you, and to our students who came up large to make this work in safe ways. But I'm also going to be effusive in my praise and my thanks and my gratitude to these principals who stepped in and stepped up to own all of this. And really well done, you know, as a dad and as a colleague and as a leader. Thank you to you principals and thank you to our whole team. But really, you principals deserve a lot of credit on this. And any families that are watching this, our families deserve a lot of credit and our students deserve a lot of credit because ultimately, they are the ones who are working, showing in some ways the most flexibility to keep us all safe as we get back normal. And our teachers and our staff, just a magnificent team effort. And there's, nobody here is interested in credit, but there's lots and lots of credit to go around to all parties. So thank you all. We're really excited about continuing with our elementary students. We're very excited about getting geared up for middle and high school. And I think April and early May are going to go down, of 2021 are going to go down as great months for public school systems and for the Mount Graylock Regional School System. You know, in terms of our high school students, I appreciate Colin and Jake actually putting a date on the calendar of Monday, May 3rd, that we're anticipating our high school students stepping back in five days a week, full-time. We're still awaiting the commissioner's guidance on this, but certainly if his guidance is earlier, we will follow that guidance. If his guidance is later, we do intend to blaze our own trail on that and to get our high school students back in person. Really want to thank the two students and their teachers that performed for us here tonight. And I'm sorry about the broken string that kept us from hearing another magnificent musical piece. If you haven't had a chance to see the YouTube video of the Mount Graylock School Musical, all of you School Committee members should have the link. I'm happy to reshare it. If you go into any search engine and you Google "2021 Mount Graylock School Musical", it's a really a pretty amazing variety of talents and shows and pieces that our students pulled together. And another moment where I was finding myself reaching for the tissue box a little bit, the first and second time that I watched through that. So please do yourself a favor and take a look at that. Students were just incredible. The creativity and the courage and the abilities are just magnificent. And I think with that, that's all I have for just general updates. You know, except to thank the many people in our community, including the building inspectors from Lanesboro and Williamstown. These tents are structures. They have to go through a rigorous building inspection, just like any other structure that's going to house people. So thank you to our, you know, to everybody that the principals thanked. And I will add to that, thank you to our town partners out of the inspection departments for helping getting these okayed and up and running. With that, I am going to do a share screen and pull up the proposed school calendar for everyone to take a look at. Can people see that? Is it working? Just a head nod? Yes, okay. So in thinking through, you know, what we wanted to do with the school calendar this year and like it seems like everything else this year, this is, I suspect, a little bit later than the school calendar traditionally comes before you. I am going to just sort of do a year's worth of a walk through this calendar. But you know, really, our guiding principles were making sure that we have enough time to do the professional development that we need to do and the professional development that we want to do. And so I think the most striking feature of this year's calendar are the days that you will see that if you can see my cursor moving or identified by green with a diagonal slash through the green date. These are proposed half-days. These are days that do the double duty of working toward our 180 school days. And we're confident that they're going to be 180 in-person school days. But they also, so they count toward the 180, but they also give us time to do really important training work with our administrators, with our teachers, with our cafeteria staff, our custodial staff, our paraprofessional staff. And our intention, particularly when it comes to DEI and B work, is that that's a community effort. And it starts with the community that includes everybody from the central office to everybody that works in school buildings or around school buildings. And so the most prominent feature of this calendar shows up on October 8th, October 29th, January 14th, February 11th, March 11th. There is a full PD day on March 18th and then on April 8th. And these are the days that we have identified as half-days, which we have already started tentatively booking in some professional development on those days. You will observe that our half-days are all placed on Fridays. My experience in being superintendent in three different districts, although this is my first go-around with half-days here, but I know that what I've seen is going to prove true. Our colleagues are thirsty for these training opportunities and hungry for these training opportunities. And so, you know, we place them on Friday in an effort to, A, give parents and caretakers and people that do care for children out in the community, sort of that these are going to fall on Fridays. In many ways, this is a very, we hope that it's a very family-friendly approach that should a family choose to get a jump on a long weekend or just a plain old weekend, that these Fridays provide that opportunity. We tried to avoid November and December because they're such choppy months anyway. And then really even the April 8th half-day, we may need to move that one. Once the 2022 MCAS calendar comes out, we will know whether that one is one that we're going to have to move or that we can live with. But really, after that point in April, one year from today, as a matter of fact, we are too deep into MCAS worlds to be scheduling half-days. So, you know, going back to the beginning of the calendar, the 26th and the 27th of August are our two days for our new teacher institute. The 25th of August, actually, we just this morning tentatively booked the 25th, the 26th, and the 27th with one of the people that are going to be helping us with our DEIB work throughout this year. And we'll be talking more about that in upcoming meetings. First day where all teachers are asked to come back is Tuesday, August 31st. So two professional days, August 31st and Wednesday, September 1st. And then looking at our first day with students and for students, Thursday, September 2nd. Labor Day is the 6th this year. And I, you know, there are folks that prefer a post-Labor Day start for students. Not knowing what we're going to do with snow days this upcoming year, that's a conversation we need to have with some lessons learned from this past school year in our hearts and minds. We thought it was appropriate to start students or ask students to start pre-Labor Day. We get a good Thursday and a good Friday and then a long weekend. And for some of our students and for some of our staff, that I believe the 6th into the 7th and into the 8th is Rosh Hashanah, which will impact, you know, attendance for some of our families, some of our students, some of our staff. But for everybody else that is not honoring those days, looking at the 7th being that first day back after Labor Day and then we're just running full speed into the 21-22 school year. Trying to think of anything else, if you go all the way to the end of June, you can see that we've accounted for five snow days. Monday, June 20th is Juneteenth, which is a holiday. And we're actually, I think, all excited to see that officially as a holiday on our calendar. And then, you know, in reality, the state wants us to plan for 10 potential bad weather days in the case of sort of a catastrophic storm. So this calendar, even though we only designate five, it does allow us to go a full 10 inclement weather makeup days without getting into the next fiscal year or the next contract year, which is a good thing. So this is the, this is the school calendar. I would suggest to you that if we adopt this school calendar, that it becomes in many ways a template for moving forward with the inclusion of half-days as professional development time. You know, we need the time. We need the time to reflect. We need the time to gather and learn from one another. And we need the time to learn from experts that whether they're joining us in person or virtually are helping us become better practitioners all the time. There are a couple of ways to get professional development time within a public school calendar. One is to just increase the length of the school year within the teacher's contract. That's a very expensive proposition, probably looking at about $200,000 for, you know, $150,000 to $200,000 for every additional day we buy or we offer to add on to a teacher's work year. Because teachers make a daily rate and generally to extend the school year costs that same daily rate. The same goes for asking people to come in during non-contractual time. We are buying days at a daily rate. And certainly, many things that we do are worth that investment. And we will be doing that as a part of our DEI and B work that will begin this summer. That aspect of our work, other pieces of that work will be starting here very soon, even as we get deeper into April. And those are great investments and we will continue to make them. But when we want the entire faculty and staff of the district, really the only cost-effective way to do that is to do it through half-days. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions or hear any concerns about this vision of the academic calendar. Carrie?
Yep.
Thank you, Jake. I have a couple of questions. One is the pre-Labor Day start a teacher contract question? I don't know that we've, I don't know that we've done that before. No?
There, I believe we have done it before. Maybe it was prior to regionalization, but we ran this by the union team that we do problem solving in the JLMC with. And I believe the contract language does have a date in August at which we cannot ask teachers to come in and have student contact. But this falls well within what the contract allows. Yes.
Great. My other question, I have two more questions. I'll try to be quick. The half-days that are being proposed are training days for the teachers, specific to DEI, at least some of them, DEI and B. Would there also be educational opportunities on those days for the students around DEI and B? Is that part of the picture that you're thinking here?
We certainly could include those educational opportunities for students. The vision with creating the calendar was considering that we really not only want, but need time for all of the staff. And so, but there's certainly no reason why, particularly with some of the work that we'll be doing, it could not be inclusive of students as well, Carrie. And just, this was not your question, but just to clarify, we will be offering a take-home lunch every one of these half-days. So the half-days do not preclude lunch for students that need or want lunch on that day.
And my last question is, why is September 7th and September 8th, why are September 7th, 8th half-days?
Those are very specific half-days for, I'm looking on the calendar. Those are half-days for pre-K and kindergarten students to allow for work that needs to be done at the beginning of the school year with students and families to happen. So those really, those only apply to pre-K and K.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Julia?
First, I want to say this looks fantastic to me. I think a quality school system has to create a lot of space for teachers to collaborate and learn together. So I appreciate seeing these embedded in the calendar and as you said, potentially as a template for future years, whether or not that time is all for DEI and B or whatever other initiatives that are essential to ensure that teachers have that time together. One question I had is historically, there's been a countywide professional development day as well. And I wondered if that's reflected in here or what the plan is for that.
Yeah, the countywide professional development day tends to fall on Election Day. It has for probably the last seven or eight years. That is, in, you know, some schools are used for elections, some schools are not. Some schools are comfortable moving forward with school on Election Day, some are not. We really, after much discussion, if there is something so pressing on that day or so important on that day that there are specific individuals that wish to make use of that day, we would certainly support that as a part of an individual's growth plan. We did not feel that that was, we did not necessarily feel that that was a need for us to take the entire day off in order to participate in that.
Right.
You're welcome.
Michelle?
I also like all the space that is there for professional development as a teacher, obviously. I think that's really important. I do have some concerns about the half-day. I think I've talked about this at other school committee meetings before. You know, Williamstown has the youth center and the kids all pretty much drain into there who don't have parents who pick them up. Lanesboro doesn't have that. So it, half-days can be a bit more of an issue for parents in Lanesboro. Like, what do they do with their kids? Now, to be fair, they have nearly a full year to plan, at least six months to plan for it. But have we ever considered, we used to have a before, and this is a side note, but we used to have a before and after-school care program that would, I think, then maybe also do care on these half-days or, I might be making that up. That could be a different district. But have we ever considered doing something like that again at Lanesboro? Or is that just not something we've thought about in this nutso year?
Yeah, I think that, you know, you correctly, to me, as both a parent and an educator, identified the concern with half-days, which is kind of twofold. One, if your half-day doesn't include lunch, you could be doing, you could be doing some harm to a child. The second concern, which may be more universal, is that this will impact some families certainly in more worrisome ways than other families. We are open to looking at options. We, we are open to looking at options, really in both schools to, to, to add to this. We, we do think getting it out and identifying the days ahead of time. It does give folks plenty of time to plan. And, and certainly the, the scrambling that so many families did this year has probably given many a, a, a better starting place for that than, than they got in, in mid-March of last year. But, but we would certainly be open to that. I mean, there's the potential for some of our high school students perhaps to, to help out with, with some care situations that are, that are well programmed and well organized in advance. So Michelle, I, I, I can't say we have a solution, but, but it's certainly something we're open to looking at.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't want it to get forgotten about because I, I know it's been brought up as an issue before and then we had sort of cut back on the half days. So just something to keep in, in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't, I'd like a motion to approve.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Move to approve the Mount Greylock Regional School District 21, sorry, 2021 through 2022 school year calendar.
Thank you, Carrie, for that motion. Do I have a second?
Curtis seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, bye, I.
Green, I.
Johnson, I.
Miller, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Okay, thank you, Jake.
Christina? Yes. Sorry, I had one more question just to clarify with Jake from the first part of his presentation. We moved so smoothly that I didn't get my question in. And I, and this is really, I apologize if this has been stated clearly and I somehow missed it. But am I hearing that the high school isn't starting with the middle school in part as you're still working out the lunch process? Is that the?
We are, yeah, I don't often get accused of, of moving so smoothly as to have something be missed. So I will,
So revel in that for a minute.
That will let you off the hook of my personal insult over the belt and suspenders, you know, from last time. But no, seriously, we, we, we are keeping high school as, you know, we're, we're, we're putting a line in the sand, but we're not putting a line into the newly poured sidewalk that, that will harden. The, the, I, I do think there, you know, we, we certainly did discuss, and I know Jake and, and Colin and their, their colleagues over in the Middle One High School building discussed at much greater length. Really wanting particularly the seventh graders to have the place to themselves for a few days. That, that, that notion of after the year, all of the students have had coming in with, you know, 580 or 600 students will, all in person, all in, well, will, would have really the potential to be a bit overwhelming. When you may not know the building that well, you may not know everywhere you're, you're supposed to be or where you're going that well. Because we do have some students that are coming back from homeschool plans, from remote instruction. And so I think a, a piece of it is, is wanting to, to see where the commissioner winds up with his orders to it. A piece of us, of it is really wanting to, both for the students and the, the staff and the faculty at Mount Greylock to see what it looks like with this many students in the building before we bring back this many students. And, and really just to get a little bit of a cushion of time. The, the lunches are a challenge at Mount Greylock. Unlike Lanesboro and Williamstown Elementary's campuses. And, and Joe did the legwork on this. The, the professional tent people really could not come up with a spot on our high school campus where a tent was not going to get torn apart ultimately by the wind. At least not a spot that was within any kind of a convenient distance to, within the cafeteria. You know, within, within proximity to the cafeteria. So we are doing some work on the barn next door, the cross-country ski shed, ski waxing shed. It will be ready to go for, for students to be inside of. And, and we're gonna lend some help with the supervision of those lunches from this building, just to take the pressure off of our, our high school colleagues. So that May 3rd is not set in stone. It, it, it could bump a little bit either way, Julia. But really, the, the, the notion was around giving the middle school students some protected time altogether in their building. And then taking that next step of transition.
And so they will have it, the Wednesday they come back, Thursday, there will be half of the high school back with them. Is that right? Because high, high school will still be in hybrid?
We are, we are working out what that's going to look like. That, that will very likely be the case, that the Thursday, Friday high school cohort will be in. And, and so, you know, they will have that one day. Then we'll step into having the whole middle school and half of the high school, you know, for a couple of days. And then really a Monday where we're welcoming everybody back if, if, if things keep going as, as well as they're going.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So moving on to the next agenda item, unless you have anything else, Jake. Discussion of return to in-person school committee meetings. This, a couple of our members have talked about or asked when we would start meeting in person again. And it seemed like this might be a good time to chat about it since we have our elementary school kids full in time now. And we, you know, just like any other public body, we have to follow guidance for distancing, hand washing and mask wearing. And we traditionally meet in our meeting room and I don't know if you've all been in the meeting room. I feel like maybe some of the school committee members haven't been in the meeting room yet and know the size of it. So it, it's just a conversation that I thought we could start having now. There, obviously there are the, I've seen in the newspapers that the Williamstown Select Board has been talking about the advantages and disadvantages of remote meetings and in-person meetings for those school committee members who have participated when we tried to do hybrid school committee meetings. There, there was some difficulty with it in terms of having to wear masks and being heard by each other and being heard by the listening audience. So those are some kinks that we would have to work out. And Jake and I have talked a little bit about some of the technology that we could bring in to help move along in-person meetings, if that was something that we wanted to start doing. For right now, the, the open meeting, the governor has not rescinded our ability to meet remotely. That's one of the important things that we can consider right now. So we can continue to meet remotely. But I just thought it would be something that we could discuss and figure out what we wanted to do move, moving forward if we wanted to continue meeting remotely for now and revisit it later. Steve, you have your hand up?
Yes, in the discussion about whether or not we'll be meeting in person, what are the thoughts about having in-person guests to the meeting?
Right.
It would be much more.
So we, the, the indoor public venues are allowed 100 people. Obviously, we can't fit 100 people into our meeting room. Jake, I don't know if you had the opportunity to take it today to go down, figure out if it were the seven school committee members and Jake and Joe in the room. This is one of the things we talked about. And maybe Joel and Ellie and all the principals were on Zoom. That was one possibility. So we could get more of the public physically into the room. But again, we have to abide by the six feet distancing. One option we have is to have overflow go into the cafeteria and have some kind of screen out there. But I don't, Jake probably would like to weigh in on some of these crazy ideas I'm tossing out.
Not, no crazy ideas. We, we did, Stacy and I went over and spent some time there today. And I'd gone over a couple of weeks ago, just because I don't think I had ever seen that space initially. You know, from a, from a technological point of view, I, I believe our technology folks, Rob and Cody, could have things up and running and ready to go for May. And so what that would, that would allow us to, to have people zoom in and out of the meeting. You know, there, there are two big monitors there with microphones and cameras. So you could see if somebody had, you know, public input or if a principal was delivering a report. That, that possibility is there. The cameras are obviously there. So the meetings would go out unwilling net. They could be broadcast in real time on YouTube like they were in August when you, when you last attempted this. The, the big challenge that I see, kind of a couple of things. By the time you get the school committee in there and even, even if there were two people from the administration in the room, I, I think you would be pressing it to have more than seven or eight other people live in the room and maintain the appropriate distance that, that it is demanded that we keep. And, and, and also there is, there's the bigger conversation that the committee needs to have about, you know, as, as we saw in the Berkshire Eagle articles recently, you know, the, the participation is up around the county in terms of the democratic process. And, and, and so, you know, considering keeping some Zoom availability, particularly as it impacts the, the, the folks that we serve in the community to, to weigh in on agendas and agenda items is something that we really need to consider keeping a hold of. But, but it's, you know, there's going to be the school committee, two of us and, and seven to nine people if we got really creative and, 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 and everybody was kind of squeezed with, with six feet of distance in the room.
Jose?
Yeah, this is just a, a general question about whether we have identified any, any aspect of our work as a committee that is being hindered by this remote format. Are we aware of any, any aspect of our work that, that we can't do, given the format that we're currently in?
That's a good question. I don't know that I have an answer to that. Um.
I have, wait, can I just say one thing about that?
Sure.
I, I do think you have different relations with people when you actually physically are with them. And so I'm not saying every meeting needs to be in person, but I think having at least a few meetings in person does help for the committee to just get to know each other and to get to know the members of the administration.
Jake?
Yeah, I, I would, I would, I would second Steve's thought that, that, you know, it's, it's important to be together. And it's important for us to consider means of creating opportunities to be together. I, I also though, I hope folks are thinking through, it is as a, as a public governmental body that's dedicated to serving children and the families and the caretakers of children. There, there is a piece of what the pandemic has forced us to do that in some ways is incredibly family friendly for people with children at home or, or with people who are, you know, trying to take care of children even as they're trying to serve their community. And if we, you know, in the big picture, if we want the school committee to be appealing, if we want administrative jobs within this district to be appealing to people at, at all stages of their, of their professional life and their family life, there, a consideration to keep some allowance for participating remotely, even, even for administrators and school committee members may allow us to appeal to a broader group of people within the community that we would like to see represent the community through their work or through their, their elected service. So.
I saw Michelle's hand up first and then Carrie.
Jake, I would agree with that. I, I have, I think way back when we first formed this district, I asked when the, when the meetings would rotate between the buildings because in other regional districts, that's exactly how it happens. It always felt a little unfair to me that all meetings are held in Williamstown. So we have to make the big trek up if we from Lanesboro want to participate in these meetings. So I think that keeping some aspect of it on Zoom sort of levels the playing field a little bit. I, I'm wondering if it's a, if it's a logistical question, is it six feet apart or three feet apart? I think it might be three feet apart now.
It's six for adults, six for adults, three for kids.
Okay, see, I'm, I'm submerged in elementary school where it's three or six if you're eating. And then I'm questioning why we can't have our meeting in the auditorium. A very big auditorium.
Yeah, we, we could certainly, that was actually the first possibility and potential that we looked into. And, and we did spend some time over there. Technologically speaking, that is a much greater challenge. My understanding is that's a much greater challenge for willing that. That's a much, much greater challenge to livestream it on YouTube. And there, it presents some challenge with, with Zoom. It, it could be done. I, I think there are some things that we would lose by doing it in the auditorium in terms of, of people's ability to participate. But it could be done.
Okay, thank you.
Carrie? So I have a couple of thoughts. One is that I would hesitate to go back to in-person meetings until we could fit anybody who wanted to attend in person in the room. I think hybrid is fine as long as people are choosing to be hybrid. If you're, if they don't have a choice and they, they're forced to be on a computer when they would really rather be in person. I, I would rather everybody be on the computer. My second thought is that in the fall, if we're anticipating being back full swing, I would like to anticipate the school committee being back full swing in the building. But that perhaps every other meeting, if we continue to do this, like this meeting, the special meetings where the principals are presenting and the families may be even more inclined to want to tune in, perhaps every other meeting could be remote. And the main sort of, the, the meeting that is more about policy or things that are not as, you know, who knows? But that's my, my sense is that if we could do every other meeting remote and every other meeting in person come fall, that might be a really nice compromise. But until then, I would encourage us to stay remote if we are under the same sort of restrictions around distancing and masking and all that.
Yeah, it will be interesting to see what happens with the orders from the governor to, in the fall. But I think that's a fine recommendation. Okay, anything else on that topic? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is school committee member resignation. It is with a ton of sadness that I must bring for the resignation of Michelle Johnson from Lanesboro. And I know she's going to read her letter of resignation. But before she does that, I would like to thank you for your time and dedication in serving our district.
But before she does that, I would like to thank you for your time and dedication in serving our district and our committee. Um, I don't think I speak alone when saying your unique ability to share viewpoints from that of a teacher in the elementary world and in the special education world has been eye-opening, heartfelt and very much appreciated. So thank you.
Thanks for making that just a little bit harder. So I'm just going to read what I wrote, which is, um, it is with great sadness that I submit this letter of resignation. This was to Christina, um, submit this letter of resignation to you and the school committee. Effective April ninth, 2021, for personal reasons, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with this school committee and I'm not sure I've come across a more professional thoughtful, oh, I'm not going to do it. Thoughtful, professional, thoughtful and dedicated group of people who very clearly have the best interests of children in mind. I'm not going to do it. Okay, I have learned a tremendous amount in my short tenure on the committee from you, Jake and Joe. You, by you, I meant everyone. I will be forever grateful for your patience with my many questions and your prompt thoughtful responses to all of them. Okay. Okay, I urge the committee to continue on the path we have taken this year. I hope anyone planning to take my seat will do so with this in mind. Our committee has proven that we can ask tough questions and make difficult decisions while being respectful and professional, even if we don't all necessarily agree. Finally, I would especially like to thank Christina for her leadership as chair. I know she spends a tremendous amount of time on matters related to the school committee and I've always felt heard, informed and supported. The committee is lucky to have Christina as the chair and I am confident that she will continue to lead this incredible group in the same manner. Thanks for bearing with me.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, Steve?
I just wanted to thank Michelle for her service, even though you've only served on the school committee briefly, you've been so involved in the district for so many years. From the very moment I started on the school committee, I think around 2014, 2015, you were always providing valuable input as a member of the community. And you were asking the questions that needed to be asked when you were serving here, and I hope whoever replaces you will continue to ask those questions. So thank you very much for the time you spent.
Thank you, Steve.
Jose?
I am going to sincerely miss you, Michelle, on this committee. And I, I will fight back tears. I just want to say thank you so much for everything you've given us, that you, you've given your community, that you get, you gave this committee and that you'll continue to give all of us. One of the things that I have appreciated, of the many things that I appreciate about you, is that you, you hold us accountable, you hold, and you, you expect each other, us, to, to hold each other accountable. And all I ask is that you continue to do so. Don't, please don't be a stranger. Keep, keep us, keep us honest and true. Thank you for everything.
Thanks, Jose. I'm not sure it's in my DNA not to do that, so no problem.
Okay, so, um, I guess we accept your resignation. I don't know if I have to do that, Carrie, but I, I guess we have to. Um, and so I need to talk about what happens next, especially for the committee and for the public. Um, within, we have something within our regional agreement that talks about vacancy and that's in the school committee packet. We, we have 30 days to convene a joint meeting between the school committee and the two town select boards. At that meeting, um, any applicants are given the opportunity to present. There's discussion and then each participating member in that meeting, um, votes. The, it's important to note that the next biennial election is 2022 and that's, this, this applicant would serve until 2022. Um, and um, basically what will happen now is the district office manager will post on our district website the application for the open seat and that will get posted tomorrow. Um, and in that draft application right now, we have the applications due April 23rd. Um, and that gives us a couple, couple of weeks to get the, that meeting scheduled between the two towns and our select board. So that meeting would happen sometime at the end of April or the first week of May. Carrie?
Christina, you may have mentioned this and I apologize, but it's worth noting that the applicants for this particular position need to be residents of the town of Lanesboro.
Thank you.
And that, sure, um, and that the meeting, uh, the joint meeting will be chaired by the town moderator of the town of Lanesboro. But that, um, both, all, all three bodies vote on the position, just as anyone who's running for a seat normally, you know, in an, in an election would be voted on by residents from both towns.
Correct, and I believe the town monitor is Chris Dotig. And I also believe if for some reason there's a tie in the voting, Chris Dotig would be the tie-breaking vote. Is that right, Joe? Is that how that works?
That's the only, yeah, that's actually, he doesn't have a vote unless there's a tie.
Right.
And it has happened, actually, where the moderator has had to break a tie. Depending on how many people show up.
Right, so tomorrow, um, anyone in the public from Lanesboro who would like to apply, that information should be up on our district website. Okay, so, thank you, Michelle. Next up on the agenda are upcoming meetings and as we discussed earlier, there will be a finance subcommittee meeting on April 15th at 4:30 PM. This is not written in our agenda because we just discussed this and there will be an April 15th special school committee meeting at 6:00 PM. There is also a finance subcommittee meeting April 22nd at 4:00 PM and a school committee meeting May 13th at 6:00 PM. Um, I do not have any other items for discussion. Um, so do I have a?
I have two items, Christina. One of them is inspired by Michelle. Do we need to have somebody from Lanesboro on the finance subcommittee right now?
Um, that is a good question. Um, Jake, what did we determine that, um, we did not need to at this point?
We determined that it is not the role of the chair to fill in gaps that may arise due to these kinds of circumstances. I am more than happy to reach out to, uh, both our attorney and the, the MASC and/or the Regional School Association, MARS, to get an answer to that question.
I mean, I know it's only hopefully for a short period of time, but it is advantageous to have somebody from each town on finance.
I, I could not find anything in our policy manual that addressed that. I don't believe there's anything in the regional agreement that addresses that. I will nonetheless do a little homework tomorrow because it's a really interesting point.
Yep, and as I pointed out, um, if needed, if there needs to be a Lanesboro representative on that finance subcommittee meeting, I can slide into that role until our new member gets voted in.
And then I also had another question about a clarification of the travel policy, which I would like to ask the superintendent, because this is inspired by questions we have received in the last 48 hours.
Um, by we, who do you mean?
Email sent to the school committee.
I haven't received any emails within the last 48 hours. The only emails we've received are ones that we received quite a bit of go, so I don't really think that we need to bring back up this particular agenda item.
We, we did have at least one email I thought received in the last 48 hours by a former school committee member with some questions. And I have talked to some members of the community who have questions about how the interim policy is interpreted. And thus I would like the committee's indulgence to ask some questions.
Michelle?
This doesn't sound like a, I'm still on the committee. This doesn't sound like a committee discussion. This sounds like a point of clarification with Dr. McCandless. I mean, we did have a vote on the policy. The policy was put into effect and it was sent to all the schools. That naturally generates some questions.
Right, I asked him for a point of clarification and he said he would prefer not to answer one-on-one, but rather have that done with the school committee. If I'm misinterpreting you, Jake, please let me know.
Yeah, I, I, I actually suggested that, that it was dangerous ground for a superintendent to interpret the will of the school committee via an adoption, particularly when there is a, 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 a policy adoption, particularly when I, the, the nuance that it appeared to me you were looking for would, would be beyond what I think the spirit and certainly what is written in the policy would suggest. So I, I, I guess in short, my answer was I'm, to me, that went beyond a clarification to an outright change of the policy.
And this is why you bring it up now. To have both a first read and a second read, which is not what we did this time. And that's why they have some points of clarification for members of the community that I think would be beneficial to talk about.
Carrie, my understanding is that, um, our, our policy, the school committee policy development and policy adoption doesn't talk about first and second read and we have been, we have been doing that as practice, but it's not in the policy. Is that your? I, I'm not totally clear on that, however. Um, my feeling is at this point, Steve, we had a special meeting to discuss this policy specifically. We spent over an hour as a committee discussing it and we voted it six to one for moving the policy forward. My understanding also is that as a committee, we agree to, it, it's part of our, our code of ethics to support the will of the majority of the committee. And this feels like it's not being honored at this point.
Well, I, I'm just trying to get clarification as to what this policy means, because I think there were some unintended consequences from this. And when we don't have a first and a second read, when we do it all in one meeting, we don't have an opportunity for members of the community to bring these forward to our attention at the time. And this information comes in later and it results in people changing their plans to try to honor the new policy. And I think it would help the people as they are trying to plan the next few weeks to have a little clarity on some questions, which is why I was hoping to ask them.
Michelle?
Are the, are the questions about exceptions to the policy?
It, it's about the application of the policy.
But by that you mean exceptions?
The school committee's job, the application of the policy is implementation and implementation is the work of the administration. And if the superintendent has said that this, that it's not in line with the policy as it was voted, then that's implementation and it really is the role of the administration, not the school committee. I don't want to get into a discussion of how the policy is going to be implemented. It's not our job.
Thank you, Carrie.
I, 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 I would like to be able to ask my questions if that is.
No, well, at this time, we are not further discussion, discussing the policy. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
No moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Julia, seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Go and I.
Conry, I.
Hudson, deny.
He mouthed it.
Alton, ban eye, green eye.
Johnson, sadly, I.
Miller, abstain.
Okay, that motion passes. It is 7:43 PM and this meeting is adjourned. Michelle, we are going to miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.